Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 28th, 2023 New Bern Board of Aldermen Meeting. The prayer tonight is going to be coordinated by Alderman Brinson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In fact, I was just talking to him. We'd like to introduce and call up Aaron Golden. He's the pastor at Union Point Church on Trent Road, basically from down east, so he's from around here, and had a calling to come to New Bern and started church, so here he is.
Thank you, guys, for having me tonight. Let's pray. Jesus, we thank you for gathering us together. Everybody in this room right here loves eastern North Carolina and specifically New Bern, North Carolina tonight. And so, we pray tonight that we would move in a spirit of unity, as Paul says to the Ephesian church, "To maintain the spirit of unity and the bond of peace." And so, whatever business lay before tonight and its agenda, I just pray that every person involved tonight would continue in that bond of peace. May New Bern be different because the people chose to work together and not against one another. And we pray that your kingdom would come right here, on earth, in New Bern, as it is in heaven, in all things that we participate in. We just ask that, in your son's name, Jesus. Amen.
If you would please let's stand if we pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Alderman Prill?
Here.
Alderman Royal?
Here.
Alderman Astor?
Here.
Mayor Odom?
Here.
Alderman Kinsey?
Here.
Alderman Best?
Alderman Brinson?
Here.
Okay, Board, item number three is to approve the agenda. Are there any changes? If not, entertain a motion.
Make a motion that the agenda stands as is.
A motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. It's the pleasure of the Board.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
I have a question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Consent agenda, the resolution to close the 400 block of Pollock Street is included?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question regarding that. What are the regulations that govern street closures wherein, maybe Attorney Davis can answer, is there a policy that neighbors have to be notified, that there had to be signatures, or what regulates street closures?
Yes, ma'am. The Board has the legal authority to close the street, and that's the only legal requirement. Beyond that, staff may have administrative processes, but we don't have anything in the code that requires any formal notices.
So, I have seen with some street closures, residents are notified. Is that just at the discretion of the person who has petitioned for the streets to be closed? Because again, what I'm hearing you say is there is no regulation outside of the Board voting to do so.
So, Alderman Royal, in the application for special event permit, if there's going to be a street closure, there is an item marked on there, are residents notified? And so, we do expect, if there's a street closure, that those are affected or notified, whether that be someone going door-to-door or posting something to let them know when that street closure is going to be.
Was that protocol followed with the closing of 400 block of Pollock Street?
Normally, with downtown items, the Downtown Business Council notifies the adjacent owners if there is going to be a street closure. That's normally what happens with downtown closures.
Thank you.
Ms. Clerk, I believe we roll a call with Alderman Royal.
That's correct. Yes. Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Consent agenda carries. Item number six, consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of parcel ID 8-039-197 on College Street. Ms. Hughes.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. Jesse Adams submitted the offer of $2,250 for the purchase of this property. It's tax parcel ID 8-039-197. The bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received. The property is a vacant 0.11 acre residential lot acquired by the city in May of 2000. It does have a tax value of $4,500.
Can we do six and seven at the same time?
If it's unanimous.
Okay. So, let me just introduce item number seven as well, if the Board wants to consider putting these two together. On item number seven is consider adopting a resolution approving the sale of parcel ID 8-039-203 on St. John Street. Ms. Hughes.
Okay, Jesse Adams, again, has purchased, made an offer of purchase of this lot for $2,250. Tax parcel ID is 8-039-203. Bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received, and this is another 0.11 acre residential lot. It was acquired by the city in May of 2000 as well, and has a tax value of $4,500.
It's the pleasure of the Board on item number six and seven.
May I make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the sale of parcel ID 8-039-197 on College Street, as well as parcel ID 8-039-203 on St. John Street?
Second.
Have a motion is second on item number six and seven. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number eight, consider adopting a resolution approving reimbursement to the NC Department of Transportation for fabrication and installation of New Bern High School 4A championship signage. Mr. Hughes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Childs to come up and make this presentation.
Good evening, Board, Mayor. At the recommendation from the Mayor and some of the Board members, there was a request for us to investigate installing signs entering town at the city limits, recognizing football teams' most recent 4A championship. I've got an example that was included in the package. This is an example, unfortunately, came from Havlock, but that is the closest, that we're thinking similar to the signage, which is below their entrance sign coming into town. From our looking around of what was best service, where the signs would be located, we've identified three locations. This is on US 70 West, coming over the Trent River Bridge, coming up to the Pembroke entrance. So, the one on the right, it would go below the Pepsi sign, where we currently have a "Welcome to New Bern" sign. The second is off of Highway 70, coming into town, entering Glen Burnie exit, very similar to that, it would go below the city entrance sign and the Pepsi recognition sign. And the third being closest to the high school on Highway 17, and this would be very similar to the previous two. From conversation with NC DOT, the costs associated with each one of these would be approximately $400 each. That's for fabrication and installation provided by DOT. So, to facilitate that, what we're requesting is the Board adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to reimburse NC DOT for this cost.
Board have questions? Alderman Brinson?
So, the birthplace of Pepsi signs will stay there, and then the championship signs will go underneath it? Is that the idea?
Correct. That would be planned right now.
Okay. Any other questions?
If no further discussion, I make a motion to adopt a resolution approving reimbursement to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for fabrication and installation of New Bern High School 4A championship signage.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number nine, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the execution of a MOU with the Bureau of ATF. Mr. Hughes.
I'd like to ask Chief Gallagher to come up and make this presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Board, we are requesting that you approve the MOU allowing the New Bern Police Department to enter into an agreement with the Department of Justice, specifically the ATF, to allow us access to NEST, which stands for the National Correction, the NIBBEN Enforcement Support System. This gives us real-time access to all the ballistic data within the NIBBEN system. This allows us to enter our own ballistic evidence into the system and retrieve from that system all data stored. This will allow us to have the ability to cross-reference our ballistic information with ballistic information from the region, the state, and the country. This gives us an additional investigative tool to solve firearm criminal investigations within our city. There is no cost to the City of New Bern or the New Bern Police Department, and we will assign staff specific to the ability to enter and retrieve information, and all information relating to ballistic evidence would be for criminal justice purposes only.
Board have questions?
No questions, and I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution authorizing the, what number are we on now?
None.
The execution of a memorandum of understanding between Bureau of ATF.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 10, thank you, Chief. Consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amended grant contract with the NC Land and Water Fund. Mr. Hughes.
Mayor, before we get into this item, I'd like to ask Chris Seaberg to come up. Chris is our new Community and Economic Development Manager, and I'd like for him to give a brief introduction of himself, and then he'll go right into this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. My name is Chris Seaberg. I'm the new Economic Development and Community Development Manager. We do have before you a contract extension or amendment. Contract is for $150,000 grant from North Carolina Land and Water Fund. This group did approve the original on March 22nd, 2022. On September 20, 2022, the North Carolina Land and Water Fund Board of Trustees approved an amendment, start date from the previous September 15th, 2022, to June 30th, 2023. No other amendments were made to the contract. Authorization must now be given to the city manager to sign this amended contract on behalf of the city. I am open to any questions.
Board have questions on item number 10? Not entertain a motion?
I'd like to adopt, I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an amended grant contract with North Carolina Land and Water Fund.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Brinson.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries, and welcome again, Chris, to the team. All right, moving on to item number 11, consider adopting a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a MOU with the NC Emergency Management for the Duffy Field Stormwater Enhancement Grant. Mr. Hughes.
So, Mayor, we were awarded $2,586,291 by the Emergency Management Disaster Relief and Mitigation Grant Fund through the North Carolina Department of Public Safety and Emergency Management. This grant will be used to start on the initial phases of the Duffy Field Stormwater Project. We're really excited to have these funds to be able to get started, and this, we need to get this thing signed, so we can get our folks ready to roll.
All right. Any questions from the Board? Not entertain a motion on item number 11.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of agreement with the North Carolina Emergency Management for the Duffy Field Stormwater Enhancement Grant.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Prill.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 12, consider adopting an ordinance amending the Drainage Improvements Project Fund. Mr. Hughes.
Okay, the ordinance amends the Drainage Improvements Project Fund to recognize funding that we have received in the amount of $2,586,291.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Drainage Improvement Project Fund.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Royal.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 13, consider adopting an ordinance to amend Chapter 70, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 99, stop intersections of the Code of Ordinances. Mr. Hughes.
I'd like to ask Mr. Childs to make this presentation.
Good evening, Board. What we are requesting in this is a recognition by the Chief Police and a request to put an always-stop at the intersection of Queen and George. Currently, the intersection is controlled by two stop signs, both on Queen Street, and the correspondence from the Chief to myself was included in the package with the request, and the reasoning behind it due to the numerous near misses and basically collisions between vehicles at that intersection. We evaluated the intersection within Public Works and recognized that the intersection is not a 393 angle. There are sightline issues also at the stops on Queen Street currently, so the implementation, we believe, would correspond with that of the Chief Police to go ahead and implement a four-way stop. So, the resolution would be to amend the ordinance to include George and Queen as an always-stop intersection.
Board have questions on item number 13?
George, in a situation like this, where we're going from an intersection with two stop signs to one that's now going to be a four-way stop, are there any steps that are taken to alert motorists that the intersection is now a four-way stop, so that people who are accustomed to going down there don't just drive right through it without paying attention to the fact that there's now a stop sign that they have to comply with? Are there any, any flag signage or anything to alert that will be steps taken to help alert people and educate them?
Yes, and in this situation, and with all new implementation of stop signs or changes in traffic control signs, we usually put flags on the new stop signs, which will be the case here also. There'll also be always-stop placards put on all four sides of intersections. So, the two existing signs on Queen will have an always-stop placard, as well as the new signs on George. We'll also quit, be installing stop-ahead signs on George Street, both directions to inform motorists that there is a stop coming up, and we will have those flagged for a period of a month until traffic gets used to the new traffic pattern.
George, is also plans for stop bars on that location?
Yes, we will be installing stop bars once we have the signs up. Correct.
The reading had packet said there used to be a four-way stop sign there.
I believe it started when there was, and maybe somebody with a little more driving knowledge before I had my license, I believe there may have been a signal there at one time, too.
So, I'm trying to figure out why we stepped it down, and then now why we're going back?
From my understanding, traffic patterns, so we had a lot more industrial and commercial traffic, had our shots came that way, mainly because the only way across the Neuse River was through town at that time. So, you had to come down basically to the traffic circle to go across the bridge, and that also served to be the case with, we had Maola, both the timber mills that were on that side of the, side of the road, so we had a lot more daily commercial traffic coming down that road.
Any more questions, Board?
Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval of an ordinance to amend Chapter 70, Traffic and Vehicles, Section 99, Stop Intersections of the Code of Ordinances.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Astor.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries. Item number 14 is appointments. I did not see any in the package. Are there any that I missed by chance? Okay, move on to number 15, Attorney's Report.
Nothing, unfortunately, Mayor.
Item number 16, City Manager's Report.
A few items to give you an update on, just to remind everyone, the New Bern, the annual New Bern Fire Truck Pool is going to be on Saturday, March 11th. Activities will begin at 8:00 AM, and they're going to have an open house thereafter, so if you haven't participated or witnessed the fire truck pool before, we highly encourage you to come out and check it out. It's really a fun day that the fire department puts on.
Foster, how many people's on the team?
I think there are six people on the team.
One, two, three, four. Is the Board interested in participating?
I can't even hardly pull myself.
Alderman Kinsey could pull your weight.
All right, well, I asked. Okay, go ahead.
But you can represent us, Mayor.
I mean, if five other people won't be on their team, then I'll be happy to do it.
It's a lot of fun, so come check it out. Also, want to let you know that the annual Arbor Day celebration will be held on March 17th, that is, NC Arbor Day, 11:00 AM at Leander Morgan Park. We'll be giving some more information out about that later, and we will be celebrating our 27th year as a Tree City USA at that time. And the last thing I have is a Tisdale House update. Last Friday, we met with the owner of the Rim Avenue Lot, Dan Tower, and he is the one that was fortunate enough to basically be given the opportunity to move the Tisdale House over to the Rim Avenue Lot, and he's got a lot of things he's got to be able to pull together, dealing with not only all of our city departments to make sure he's got the permits in place, but also dealing with the various utilities to make sure they drop their lines or raise their lines. We did meet with him to make sure that he is on point and is getting things done. He has run into a few issues with some insurance-type things, so we're working with him to try to get that done, and we hope that this house is going to be moved by the end of the month. But he is working hard on this, and he is keeping us informed of his progress, so wanted to let you all know that.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it for tonight, sir.
All right, new business, we'll start with Alderman Brinson.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not tonight.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, sir. Well, Foster, can, I was just trying to find it, and I cannot find it. The update on the fire department grant, and did they receive their SCBA's?
So, we received this grant, don't hold me to the date, but we issued a press release, I think it was earlier today, but we received the grant, I think it was in December, November, December, we received the SCBA's in January, and then also with, with some funds, Harper Funds that you had, that you provided, we were able to order a variety of SCBA's. They have come in and are now being able to be used by the fire department, so we're excited about that. The other SCBA's were really non-compliant, and so now they're compliant, they're keeping our firefighters safe when they have to go into hazardous areas or into a house fire.
Okay, thank you. Also, Mayor, members of the Board, the, I have had communications with the fire department over the past several months. I actually went out and looked, and if anybody's ever been out to their fire station, they've got a tremendous amount of equipment. They're having it stored outside, out back. They have requested a storage building. I asked the Assistant City Manager to work with the fire department in getting a price for a storage building that would be adequate. That price has come in at $155,000, and I would like to ask this Board to approve the ARP money for, to build such a storage building to get this very expensive equipment out of the weather.
I have a motion from Alderman Astor to expend $155,000 from his ARP funds for a storage building for New Bern Fire and Rescue.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion? I just have a question. Where's it going to be located?
Behind the main fire station.
Okay. All for approval?
No, that was the question.
At least, that's the last I understood, it was going to be behind the main fire station.
Correct, sir.
Inside the secure area.
So, does that take up any parking?
There's plenty of area back there, I think, for it.
That's correct. It's not taking up any of the parking lot.
Okay. All right, let's do a roll call, starting with Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes, ma'am.
Alderman Brinson?
Yes.
Alderman Prill?
Yes.
Alderman Royal?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Odom?
Yes. Motion carries.
Nothing else, Mayor.
All right, Alderman Royal?
Nothing tonight.
Alderman Prill?
I have nothing, Mayor.
Okay, I have just a couple of things. First, I was asked to announce the Second Annual New Bern Autism 5K. Looks like it's going to be on April the 22nd, 210 East Front Street, $30 registration online. The race is from 8:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and then from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM is family, fun, and food, and you can find more information at nbautism5k eventbrite.com, and I believe that Colleen has shared this, or if not, I believe it's going to be shared on our networks. The next discussion topic, I wanted to make an announcement that Optimum has a new storefront here in town, so Optimum, it was, I think it was Cox years ago, and now it's Sudden Link, and then it was Altis, and now it's Optimum, so if anyone has issues with customer service with Sudden Link or Optimum, they have a new store that they just recently opened in the new Harris Teeter Shopping Center out on MLK. And then the last comment, I wanted to go back and revisit what Alderman Royal was talking about with street closures earlier. From the time I was an Alderman, I heard various concerns from those in the community that were affected by the street closures, and as the attorney eloquently stated, there's really no requirement. The Board can make a decision to close a street or not close a street. Mr. Attorney, is it possible, if the Board so desired, to set some sort of policy or requirement in order for us to entertain a street closure?
Give me an example, Mayor. Like a threshold?
Yeah, it could be a threshold, could be a limitation on how many times it's done in a calendar year, things of that nature.
Yes, sir. The Board could put in place a policy, but of course, the Board can always break its own policy, because you make the rules.
Sure.
So, it's fine to establish some guidelines, some procedures, if you feel like you need it.
Okay.
But there may be an exception to the rule that you may address and change your mind.
Sure. Yeah, it was, we've had some discussions, some folks in the audience have sat in on some meetings where they feel like that maybe their voice is not heard, because when the quote-unquote downtown businesses are asked about a street closure, say someone on Craven Street says, "I'm fine with the street being closed," but someone on Middle Street, that's the business that's actually affected, so.
Right.
I would encourage, Alderman Prill, you're the lucky one to be in Ward 1, I would encourage just some improved communication first, before we start talking about setting policies, because there's always going to be those exceptions, and if you set that policy and then an exception comes up, well, then everything could be an exception from that point forward. So, that would be my recommendation, is for us to just improve our communication. our communication. Again, there's been some other topics, and I'm sure we're going to talk about at some point in time, that keep coming up over and over again, and I think a lot of it is caused by a lack of communication. So that was my comments on street closures. Anything else on a new business?
What was that direction again, Alderman Prill would do what?
Just work with the various downtown businesses that have concerns and residents, too, along with Swiss Bear and the Downtown Business Council, because there's all these groups already that sort of work in that realm. And I think, as Alderman Brinson mentioned yesterday, the Downtown Council that he was thinking about was sort of going to be a duplication of efforts, if you will. So no need to reinvent the wheel. I just think that folks need to get more engaged and more involved, and they need to have their voices heard and recognized. Okay. Do we need a closed session?
Yes, sir, on two matters pursuant to one forty-three, thirteen eleven, A three, to maintain our attorney-client privilege, and a second matter pursuant to one forty-three, thirteen eleven, A five, to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
Need a motion to go into closed session?
Sir, moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any discussion? All those in favor going to closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are in closed session.
Waking us up? You used to have that thing on Johnny's.
But before, before that, I did forget to say something. I had sent an email to each of you about a tour of your wards. I think we've got three of those set up, so for those that are interested in doing that, if you just let the clerk know, we'll get it on our calendars, and then we'll, city managers will drive us around. I allotted about three hours for each one. May not take that long, may take longer, I don't know, but just want to make those aware that have not responded yet. If you're interested in doing it, it's completely up to you. So. Have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion is to adjourn is second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.